The meeting to adjourn for the planning commission for Wednesday, May 24th. If everybody would stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, please.
I wasn't been reading.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, Deborah Addy.
Excuse me, absent.
Mark Burchard.
Here.
Christopher Daggy.
Here.
Chris Hiltunin.
Here.
Christine Holcomb.
Here.
Tom Cozel.
Here.
Robert Musling here, Robert Jacobs.
Excuse me, absent.
And Kathy Schweickert.
Here, thank you. Item number four, approval amendments to the agenda.
I would like to make a motion that we amend the agenda, add item 5B, and add or move the public hearing for, what was it, 50, or 3480 Fruit Road to 5B.
Motion in second to move 3480 Fruit Road to under approval amendments 5B. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Deborah Addy.
Absent, excused.
Mark Burchard.
Mark. I'm thinking, I wanted to ask a question now, could you repeat the motion, please?
To, you want to do it your own?
Yep, to add item 5B and move the agenda item for 3480 Fruit Road to 5B.
Which is Algenac Sand and Supply.
Excuse me, but I don't see a 5B out here.
No, that's why we motioned to add 5B.
I thought you said remove, move 5B.
No, move it.
Move to 6A.
Okay.
All right?
Yep, yes.
Okay.
Christopher Daggy.
Yes.
Chris Hiltunin.
Yes.
Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Musling, yes, Robert Jacobs is absent, and Kathy Schweickert.
Yes. All right, is there any other approval amendments to the agenda under item four?
I'll motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Deborah Addy is absent. Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Christopher Daggy.
Yes.
Chris Hiltunin.
Yes.
Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Musling, yes, Rob Jacobs is absent, and Kathy Schweickert.
Yes, thank you. Item number five, approval of minutes of April 26, 2023. Any discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of April 26, 2023.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Deborah Addy is absent. Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Christopher Daggy.
Yes.
Chris Hiltunin.
Yes.
Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Musling, yes, Robert Jacobs is absent, and Kathy Schweickert.
Yes, thank you. Item 5B is 3480 Fruit Road, which was scheduled for a public hearing for today, which is called Algenac, or commonly known as Algenac Sand and Supply Soil. It has been brought to our attention that we may have difficulty with the notice that we sent out, and rather than proceed and that not be correct, we are going to move this tablet to next month's agenda. Steve, does that make sense? With the information we've received?
Yes, excuse me, yes, it does. The township again has received information that the legal description may be incorrect on the public notice. So, it's, it's, you probably shouldn't proceed with a public hearing, this could be null and void if the legal description is changed.
Okay.
And I'll motion to table item 5B till next month.
Perfect.
I'll second it.
You have a motion in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please. That would be June 23rd, I believe. Is that correct?
June 22nd.
22nd?
22nd, thank you, Chris, June 22nd. Sue, you following the motion, I'm sorry, okay.
June 21?
22nd.
22, 22.
Deborah Addy is absent.
21.
21?
21.
It's Thursday.
Hold on.
That was on Thursday.
It's Thursday.
So.
Hold on a second.
So, it's to table item 5B to next meeting, June 21st.
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 22. Thank you.
Good, Mark.
Sorry for the confusion.
Mark Burchard.
Thank you.
Yes.
Christopher Daggy.
Yes.
Chris Hiltunin.
Yes.
Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Musling, yes, Robert Jacobs is absent, and Kathy Schweickert.
Yes, thank you.
So, it's the 21st?
21st.
So, it's gonna be on a Wednesday?
Yes, I'm sorry, I misspoke.
Yeah, it's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday, a typical Wednesday.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because they're
No, I'm sorry, I misspoke.
That was me.
All right, I'm gonna move on to item number six, which is new business, which, item 6A is 2256 North Channel for our site plan review. Steve?
His request is for revised site plan approval for at 2656 North Channel Road, it's Beardsley Rack and Storage Marina. All they're asking to do is allow the two 6,000 gallon above-ground fuel tanks with three fuel dispensers at the locations as shown on the drawing that I provided you. It meets the ordinance, all requirements of the ordinance, I'm recommending approval.
Thank you, Steve. Is the applicant here a representative? Would you like to add anything? If you so, come to the podium, please. Sure. Just state your name, please.
Christopher Conklin, ma'am.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm from Corrigan Mechanical Contractors, a division of Corrigan Oil. We're the contractors for the above-ground storage tanks and the installation. I was a, I was a construction foreman for 20 years with a competitor. I was a senior inspector for the state of Michigan for Laura, Licensed and Regulatory Affairs, for 15 years. And then about two years ago, I became a project manager for Corrigan Oil. We're installing by request two above-ground storage tanks with three dispensers and six hose reels for a marina right down the road, Harson's Island. I have a small packet, it just shows everything of the scope of work, the application, the tanks, the dispensers. Excuse me, I apologize, something in my throat. And everything that is going to be at the site. We're just requesting that this get approved. If there's any questions at all, be glad to answer any, it's just a, it's a closed system. The tanks are state-of-the-art, they're the highest quality, they're called fireguard tanks. They're ballistic proof. For marinas especially, you want that in that area, not for the ballistics, which is the safety.
Hey, what's going on over there?
That was kind of, I apologize for that one. It's a, again, it's a pressurized system. All the bells and whistles are there as far as monitoring systems, as far as release detection, as far as alarm systems is for overfill, for the gentleman filling the tanks, our company. Leaks, it shuts down, there's leak detection system in place. Everything imaginable, it's from the 2018 rules from the EPA, it follows every guideline. It exceeds every guideline. The gentleman there, we made sure it does exceed every guideline. So, basically, it's the state-of-the-art system. It's a California system. California, they're, they're the pinnacle, everybody follows California. Of the, you know, the, as far as they're close to the ocean, as far as the earthquakes and such. This is that system, so it's, it's very good, very good. Is there any questions?
Did you say 2018 EPA?
2015, it was adopted in 2018. I apologize. It took time to get adopted because of the wording, through the federal government to the state. And the state, when they found out it'd be the EPA, they added on to make it, they can follow the state regulations, but they can add on for their needs as far as wells, as far as, there's nothing dealing with wells or water because it's an above-ground storage tank. Underground storage tanks fall under a totally different rule. I believe that's about it, the electrical inspector knows about everything, he's got a packet also, he, I think that's about it.
So, this is underground storage?
Above ground, there are two 6,000 gallon fireguard tanks, and they're a compartment tank, there's 4,000 gallon and 2,000 gallon. So, they'll hold, I believe it's premium, premium unleaded, I believe rec, and maybe diesel. Yes, yes. So, there's four different products. So, the dispensers, like I said, there's three dispensers, they each dispense two products, and there's hose reels for the, for each, to go to each vessel.
You have leak containment?
Yes, well, there's no leak, okay, for above-ground storage tanks, the double wall of the storage tank is the, if it was a single-wall tank, you'd have a dike around it. The fireguard double wall has interstitial monitoring, so if the primary leaks, it shuts every, I apologize. It shuts everything down, everything, from, from the, it shuts the complete system down. And it doesn't regenerate until the legal representative comes in, checks the system out.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Anything else?
No other questions? Well, thank you very much for your presentation, appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am, and if you have any questions, I have my card, call me at any time, 24/7, like I tell my boss, I'd be glad to answer anything for you.
One more question, I don't know if it's in here or not.
Yes, sir.
Have you applied for all the permits necessary for that?
Yes, sir, applied for all the permits. The only one that we're waiting on is the mechanical permit. That'll be tomorrow morning at 7:00 AM, if it's, if this is approved. And I'll be back here at 7:00 AM with, I can't apply until your, your job's completed. So, yeah, I'll be here at 7:00. Three hours again, I'm happy to do it for you guys, and then we'll just go from there.
Maybe I missed it, but where's it going on the property?
There, there's a 16, 60 by 27 insert in between two buildings. The fireguard tanks, sensor fireguards can be at least five feet away from any part of the building. So, they're right in the middle, if you, if you go into the property, I believe it's on drawing number, there's a drawing, and it shows the print, and it shows the building, actually. And it's inset in the building, and you don't need any kind of crash protection because it's inset so far.
Do you have any fixed fire protection systems?
No, there's just, the only thing for the state of Michigan is, is fire extinguishers. That's the only thing that's needed. And there, there has to be a plan set when it becomes active, so the fire department knows about it, which I believe they already do.
Yeah, I'd like to see that requirement, as well as fire department accessibility in between those two buildings.
It's, yeah, it's, it's such a small area. You can fit a boat.
Do you want to come up here and talk, come on up?
I apologize.
No, that's, no, no, that's fine.
He knows about that.
Just state your name, join the, join the discussion.
Gregford, I'm the property manager for the marina. Yeah, you can fit a boat through the alley, what you have to drive through to get around the back of the building. Any other questions, Amona?
Well, that's, well, if you drive a boat through it, I don't know, what about a fire truck?
Well, 70-foot boat's a little bigger than the fire truck.
Well, you say 70-foot wide or 70-foot narrow, I'm thinking about the
It wouldn't be 70-foot narrow or wide, it would be long.
It's this right here.
Yeah, well, I see that.
Yep.
Being narrow is what concerns me.
It's like a three-lane
Yeah.
road, it's massive, it's between two buildings.
Has our fire, has our fire chief looked at it, I didn't see any, I didn't see any
Not that I'm aware of.
Any utilities take a look at it yet?
Is it required before the planning commission?
Pardon?
Is it required for him to look at it before the meeting?
Normally.
Typically, we have, I see Gary, he's putting his head down, but typically, enter Steve. We usually have checklist, I'll call it, the checklist from the different departments. I did not see that attached to this packet.
This is the river.
Or did I miss it?
I know Chief Rose has been there, but I can't say that he's approved this, you know.
Neither one of you help us with that, or?
No, that is not the river, I'm sorry, that's the, that's the road.
And a lot of this is governed through the state.
For Laura.
So, you know, they, they kind of handle it all from there. And any permits that are required, then we would look at those locally. I'm sure Chief Rose has had conversations.
Chief Rose has actually been there, yeah.
Yes.
And one of the requirements before we met with you guys was to have a new site plan drawn up.
It's a merge.
Steve, so you guys should all have a copy of it with the dimensions of the alley on there and everything.
Right.
An architect's signature.
Usually, there's a generic checklist from the fire police, all that, and I did not see that included in this, and it is something that we don't have to have, but it's typical, typically what we see.
And I did talk to Cindy.
Babish?
Yes, ma'am, and she, her main concern was fire extinguishers. And with Laura, you had, well, as far as the fire, as far as the fire department is concerned, she just asked, I said, there's gonna be fire extinguishers placed at certain points, and she stated, what did she state, I apologize.
Cindy Babish?
It's the, the person dealing with the application, is that the same Cindy I'm talking about? I don't have her, I have her, I have her card.
She's in the building department, right, Gary?
That's probably who we would have talked to about the permit.
And I believe I asked about that, and the only thing that was needed, because I was an inspector, I explained to her that the only thing that was needed was the fire extinguishers. They're ABC, I think they're 40 gallon or 40 pounds.
Okay.
Well, at a fire, at a, at a typical refueling gas station, I'll call it, they have a fixed fire protection system.
Subject of something.
They also have a canopy over the top.
What makes this difference, other than the canopy?
There's no canopy.
I know, there's no canopy, what makes it, as far as the fire protection is concerned. Fixed fire, you know, I don't think fire extinguishers are adequate enough. First of all, I don't think fire, fire extinguishers are adequate enough for this type of installation. We, we're, we have the authority, evidence, jurisdiction, okay, whether the state says this is the minimum, we have something other than that. So, if we're just looking at this for review, that's fine, but I'd rather have Chief Rose and myself take a better look at it, along with Gary.
And as a, as an installer for the previous company, I installed storage tank systems at other marinas in this whole region, and we never had to have a fire suppression system. Their main concern was the access to fire extinguishers. And like I said, it's a closed system, if there's a leak, it shuts right down. Sir, sorry.
No, that's fine. Any other questions from board members?
Couple of questions regards to the site plan, with, is there going to be any signage saying you've got gas, you know?
Just the existing signs that were there, they changed the faces on the, or they're gonna change the faces on the signs that are there?
But, but no, additional signage?
No, no additional.
No additional lighting?
No.
Would the point of sale, would that be inside the store that you're proposing?
Yep.
So, that's where everything would be run out of, would be the store?
Yes.
Is there any additional detail on the store showing, you know, where people would park, or the actual, you've got kind of a hand sketch on it? Yeah, is there anything besides that on a?
No, 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 I have
There's an actual site plan.
We've got the site plan, but I mean, some of the store and how that would be related. You have a store, you're probably gonna want to have signage with it, you're gonna want to have parking, and that guy would assume you're gonna have some, they have some drive up there. And some parking and that kind of thing.
The only thing that we proposed, that we were, when you pull in the gate there, because it's confusing, because you're on the backside, the water's the main side, there's a sign there that points customer parking one way, office the other way, but that's the only thing they added.
But you're not really changing any of that?
Not changing any of it, no. Just trying to direct people so they know which way to go.
And through the state of Michigan, there's a instructional sign that's massive, it's about a four-foot by six-foot sign, the, it had to be a white sign with red lettering, and it describes the whole system.
It's basically a warning sign for people when they pull up.
And is that shown on the site plan where that's pointed to go?
No, it's not.
The warning sign?
Yes.
No, by law, it has to be
Before you continue, could you just state your name?
My name's Tom McCarty, I'm a representative from the MO charter.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, the parking that everyone's referring to, there'll be no traffic other than
So, what'd he say, this was
Marina equipment that's launching
What's the difference between the outside?
A boat in the ramp, so vehicle traffic will not be allowed
Okay, so we've got a tank here in the middle.
To come any closer to the building than 154.
He's got two tanks.
So, it'd be, that's North Channel?
Yes.
North Channel Drive, so there'd be no traffic going back to where the fuel's being dispensed for boat traffic, it'd be like any other typical marine, which you have at Algenac Harbor.
So, no one's gonna be pulling up there to get ice?
Not, not a vehicle, they can walk into the
So, the alley, like the driveway where I was talking about, they have the driver on the back, we're chaining that off.
Because like Sunset, you can drive right up to their little store.
You don't want, we don't want the public to give back.
People pull up there and gas their cars up there?
No.
No.
These are vessels, both fueling only.
Both fueling for vessels.
Yeah, we're blocking the back off so that, you know, pedestrians can't get back that way.
So, it's made, the store is only for people coming back boat?
You might get some of them to walk in the store, but not to get gas. But they're gonna walk in the front side.
In the front side.
Front side.
Where they always did, where the door was always at over there.
Over here.
Look who's here.
So, I see on the, on the drawing, you've got an area here that says water sports.
Yep.
Can you explain what that is?
They're gonna sell like life jackets and ropes, you know, for a boat.
So, not like jet ski rental?
No, nothing like that, no, it's
Like a West Marine or something?
Kayaks and paddleboard?
They're gonna sell kayaks and paddleboards.
So, people will be driving up there to get those things?
On the backside.
On the backside.
There's a, there's a 12 by 16-foot door on the backside that you can open up to load it. It, it's the main drive, when you pull in the gate, you drive straight up to the door.
And it has designated parking now?
Yes, they, so like where the fence is at along the property line, it's all stone alongside where the old driveway was.
Actually, I just saw, hold on one second, I just saw Chief Rose come in. We have some questions, maybe in regards to the fire aspect, so once we get done here, maybe you can join us in our conversation with the Beardsley location? Thank you, because Mark had some questions. Sorry, you walked in, I caught you.
Yeah, I hate to put you on the spot, I don't know how long, all right. Have you reviewed any of this stuff about Beardsley and the fuel, fueling tanks, the diesel and the gasoline?
I have not gotten that yet, I have not reviewed it. I know we do have clear access going in from the roadway up into the, into the yard.
Okay.
His other question was fire suppression, we don't
Right.
Is only fire extinguishers required over there?
Right.
Let me just verify that for him.
Okay, I can do that for you.
Chief, are you comfortable with us just asking these questions now, or is this something that you want to review?
I would like to review it.
Okay.
Before I make
Fair enough.
If that's possible.
Sure.
Very good. That's good.
Okay.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. I didn't want to put him on the spot, he didn't have a review or anything, so.
Right.
I've been over there, under their construction, and I've kind of looked at the yard over, and like I said, we do have access to the back. If, if something happens, we can gain access to the back of the building, so.
All right, thank you for on the spot answering.
No, that's
Apologize for that, sorry I walked in.
No.
So, appreciate that. Christine, you had asked about the kayaks and stuff, you knew we're explaining some of it?
All for retail.
Yeah, we're telling them there's some.
Okay.
And that's what she asked about, how they would load them up, and they'd drive up on that side, that where the driveway's at, to the garage door.
So, this
I got
Yes, Chris Conklin, sir, sorry.
This would be kind of probably more towards your expertise.
Okay.
So, you guys were saying that you don't have to have any sort of fire suppression because you don't have a canopy, so the fumes aren't being held in? These tanks are going in an area that is three-sided. You have for what's the grade like in that area, because that's, that's the whole purpose of having a slope in a garage, is so any fumes roll out, because the gas isn't gonna necessarily evaporate out.
Right.
It's gonna, it'll expand, but it'll stay close to the ground and spread.
Right.
So, if you're contained on three sides, you're acting maybe even more harmful than what a canopy would, because if the grade is falling back towards the building in any way, or if there's any obstruction that's gonna hold the gas in, now you're creating an area that could potentially cause combustion.
I do understand that. The, the system we're talking about, it's a closed system, so if, in the event of a leak, that there is vapors, the whole system shuts down. So, as long as there's two points, okay, let me, how do I say this? If there's a canopy you have open, the vapors do go in certain, in certain misfatales, they do have fire suppression, okay? But they do not require, the state of Michigan does not require fire suppression at all for above-ground storage tanks. Now, if there is a canopy under above-ground storage tank, the vents have to go above the canopy. Okay, they usually go through the canopy, but if there's no, if there's no canopy, there's, well, for the state of Michigan, there is no issue.
Right, so this is for a site plan review. Is there any further questions from planning commission members, and now that we've heard some explanations, Steve, do you have any further comments?
I have, I have, how are those, how are the tanks topped off?
Topped off? Oh, they, they fill, there's a spill container that's contained, fuel, a truck comes in, hooks up to it, there's a spill container for each one, it's a, it's a one-way valve, so they fill it, and it's like a check valve system. So, when they disconnect it, it's called a dry brake. It dry brakes, and it dry brakes from the vehicle, and it dry brakes from the spill container. So, there's, there's no release at all, and there's spill container, it's a five-gallon, it's like a square, five-gallon spill container.
So, that's adequate for
Yes, 100%. Ever since 2015, you need a spill container for every above-ground storage tank, either like a tub above the smaller one you see, you know, on the side of the road, or a pipe coming down that's pressurized, it pushes it in with the dry brake system. All boat plans also have the same, they're, they're top of the line, they also have the dry brake system.
What did Beardsley currently have for refueling vehicle, or boats?
They had nothing, sir.
Okay.
As far as I know, I apologize.
Any further questions, comments? Okay, we're here for site plan review. Any motions?
Do we have to pass it for the chief to look at it, is that what I got?
Should the department, should the departments all look at this and comment back to us? What if they make changes on it, and then which is a possibility in regards to parking, lighting, things of that nature?
Steve, do you have any recommendation to us?
You can approve the subject to the reviews, it probably saves these guys time.
Yeah.
Yep.
You could require them to go back, something.
I would prefer we do a subject to the reviews. That would be my preference, to save everybody time.
This time of year, time is of the essence.
Yes.
Sure is.
And I would make a motion to approve the site plan for property 74-14-057-004-000.
I think we got the wrong one.
Am I in the wrong spot? That's property ID I have on.
Say it one more time, I apologize.
Yep, 74-14-057? No? That's the one on the site plan review.
I'll give mine.
2256 North Channel, and they'll do it.
It's the North Channel.
Yeah, that's what I have on here. On Steve's letters. Letter's wrong, you think?
Yes.
Okay, then I'm gonna use an address, can I do that instead?
Use an address.
Okay, so I'm going to, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the site plan for two six five six North Channel Drive, pending.
Twenty-two fifty-six.
And I'm not gonna look at that address either. Steve?
It's this.
Okay.
It's one of those days, apparently.
Okay, then I'm gonna make a motion to approve the site plan for two two five six North Channel Drive, known as Beardsley Rack and Storage, uh, pending Department head review.
An approval?
An approval.
I'll second that.
Okay, Sue, you got it? I'm sorry. Okay, so, everybody understand the motion, do we have any further discussion? I'm waiting for Robert to head up.
Can you entertain a question?
Sure, why not?
I mean, normally it goes to a question to board members and then to audience, but the only question I have is, are you approving the site plan? And then contingent upon?
The review.
The review, yes.
Correct, yes.
Correct. I'm sorry if that wasn't clear.
Yeah, that's, I just wanted to make sure.
So we don't have to bring you back?
Yep.
Same time we go.
So Deborah Addy is absent. Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Christopher Daggy?
Yes.
Chris Hultuna?
Yes.
Christine Holcomb?
Yes.
Tom Cozel?
Yes.
Robert Musling, yes, Robert Jacobs is absent, and Kathy Schweickert?
Yes, so, everybody clear, understanding what we just did, okay?
Yeah, we got it.
Okay, we should be all set then.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, good luck.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Do you have any questions about any future patrol facilities? You have my card?
Okay.
Just in general, and not for Corrigan or what, but if you have anything, please call me, okay?
Great.
Thank you.
You guys have a good day, sir, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can't do this without it, I'm sorry. Okay. All right, next, under six, is new business for a public hearing, but before we do that, Chris, you wanna read?
I do. I'm gonna read?
Sure, go.
No, I don't care.
Go for it.
Okay.
Here you go, Adam?
Yep, I got it, we'll see if I have the right ones. So I'm gonna read the rules for a public comment and public hearing comments. Uh, public comment rules, number one, all comments must be made through the chairperson, comments directed to the applicant from the audience are prohibited. Number two, individuals wishing to speak have time limits, three minutes for each member of the general public, and six minutes for a spokesperson of a larger group. Number three, anyone wishing to speak is asked to sign in the sign-in sheet, provided however anyone wishing to speak will be given the opportunity. Number four, each individual will be allowed to speak once, it will be the chairperson's decision as to whether rebuttal comments will be allowed. Number five, citizens may appoint a sport, a spokesperson to represent those who agree on a point of view. Lastly, number six, public comments on a specific public hearing request should be made during the public hearing for that item.
Thank you, Chris. So I'm gonna open the public hearing for the address, few addresses, fifty-two, no, they're all fifty-two ninety-seven Point Tremble. Opening the public hearing at seven thirty-seven. Steve?
Good evening, again, I'm Mr. Ruiz, Daniel Ruiz, uh, the, the above described, as you indicated, property on Point Tremble. Uh, point four two acres, is requesting a rezoning of the property from C two to C three. With very little differences between the two types of zonings, other than C three allows more outside storage. And when we review rezoning requests, we typically look at the compatibility with the area. Uh, he's in an area which is mostly commercial, and across the street from an area that's industrial, which is higher in intensive, more intensive use. You see, as I provided the, uh, the zonings and the zoning map that shows that. Uh, in terms of compatibility, I mean, again, it's, I'm sure, excuse me, in terms of the master plan, the master plan just calls it as commercial. It doesn't distinguish between grades of commercial, or, uh, you know, types of commercial zoning districts, it just says it's a commercial district. We have no objection to the granting of the rezoning, however, we want everybody to be advised that the granting of rezoning does not allow the use of the property. The, the use of the property would only be allowed through site plan approval, which is what we just did. So the applicant, if he receives the rezoning, would need to come back before the planning commission for a site plan approval. And at that time, we could, uh, take a look at how it may be infecting some of the residential neighbors around it, in terms of maybe allowing walls, berms, requiring walls, berms, and that kind of thing. So the granting of the rezoning is just the first step in the process.
Thank you, Steve, appreciate it. Is the petitioner here named Daniel Re- Ruiz, or if you wanna come forward and have anything further to say, that'd be great.
Well, what it is, I, there was an issue with the property, there was some material on the property, and I cleaned it up. And it stayed that way for a year now. But during that time, the township came along and said, that I can't have my trailers back there. I'm an avid car collector, I race cars, I build my own cars, and I have trailers that I use back there. And that's what I want to rezone it for, so I could park, like you said, the storage, or call it storage, but they're trailers, they're licensed, not vehicles, but they're, you know, they get a license plate on them, it's, they're trailers, and that's what I wanna park back there.
Okay, well, thank you for the input, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, anybody in the public who would like to come forward, please state your name, your address, and any comments you have.
I am Lori, and this is my husband Jim Moffett.
Okay.
We're at fifty-three oh seven Point Tremble, so directly next door to him. So it's residential, he has a single driveway that he shares with the residential home next to me, and then it's residential on the other side. So I don't know where the zoning thing came in, that it's not residential, but it is, he is sandwiched between all residential homes. I am the one that actually had to call the blight department because of the amount of stuff that he had stored back there. We're talking like old cars with tarps on them, tires, batteries, um, pontoon boats that were old, boats, barbecues. I mean, everything you can think of was just back there, and finally I got to a point where our driveway, he shares a driveway, like I said, he's, his driveway comes in and he shares it with the residential home, so it's just a single, like gravel driveway.
Barely singled in.
And then my driveway runs directly next to him, so there's nothing really, like we can see his property, we can see all the storage, whatever he puts back there. So that does impact my home, my value of my home, I had so many people coming to my house saying, oh, why did you buy a house next to a junkyard? We bought this home, completely demolished it, and rebuilt a home with our, all of our life savings. So this is a big deal to us, that when you come down there, that he wants to turn it to C three.
To go back to a junkyard, we all know.
And then what happens when he sells his property, or something happens to him, and then the next person comes in, and now it's zone C three, and what can they do there? And that's my biggest concern, I would have never bought this, but we bought it, it was just a mom pop embroidery shop, no issues whatsoever. And then, you know, like I said, he is sandwiched in between all residential homes. He is like the only really commercial property that's there, and I'm assuming back fifty, sixty years ago when this was zoned, somebody probably owned the front property and they, you know, built this ugly building there. And, I mean, and still, it's, it's, there's a sign that's up there that's half fallen off, he's got signs all over that say no parking, and, you know, private property. I, I don't even know, to be honest, what he does there, I don't really care, to be honest, what he does in the building. My problem is what he's doing outside of the building that I can see every time we pull in our driveway. So, that's like I said, my biggest concern about this rezoning now, because they had, the blight department had to come in, they had to remove six or seven cars with these tarps on top of them, old tires on top of them, batteries lined up along the building. Again, what he does inside the building, which looks completely filled to me, is not, I don't care, as long as he's not like, you know, running a meth lap or something, but what he, with the outside of that building with no, there's nothing blocking what he puts behind that building, nothing. So when he was putting all this stuff back here, it was years of it being like this, until the city came down on him, and I had to call the blight department, Shannon had to come out, and like I said, give him thirty days, which it took him even longer than that to get it done, because there was such a large amount of stuff back there. So, I don't know why he would, I don't understand what the reasoning would be to have to change it from C two to C three.
I appreciate your comments, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other members of the audience who'd like to come forward in regards to this public hearing? I don't see anybody raising a hand coming forward.
Can I answer that?
Uh, no, not just yet. We did receive, on the, on my desk in front of me today, two letters in regards to this matter. One's from Mike Rustivo, and I guess, I'll, you wanna read this one into the record, I'll read the next one?
Clay Township, excuse me, Clay Township zoning administrator, dear administrator, I apologize that my wife and I are not able to attend the meeting this evening, as I am out of town for business and my wife is traveling home from her job. My wife and I have been residents of Clay Township for five years now, and live a couple of doors down from five two nine seven Point Tremble Drive, seven four one four four three three zero 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 four dash zero zero zero, which is looking to rezone from C two small business district to C three general business district. My wife and I are hoping that you will grant this business owner's request to rezone to C three general business district, because the business owner cleaned up the property when he first moved in, and has always kept the property free from garbage and or junk accumulating in front of and behind his establishment. The only items that I have seen behind his building has been a boat that was winterized and shrink wrapped for the winter, but he has always removed the boat once the voting season started, the area behind his building has remained empty. The owner has been very cordial with the neighbors, and has always helped us out when we have needed it, and we would hate to see him leave and or sell his property because of the zoning issue. It's very difficult in these trying times to have neighbors that are friendly, so our hope is that Clay Township will rezone this property to C three general business district. Please feel free to contact me if you have any questions or need any additional information. Sincerely, Mike Rustivo and Cheryl Rustivo, five two seven five Point Tremble Road.
Thank you, Chris. We're also receipt of another letter dated May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. It's attention Clay Township zoning, I am the homeowner at fifty-two eighty-five Point Tremble Road. The property next to me at fifty-two ninety-seven wants to rezone from C two small business to C three general business district. He has explained to me that he wants to do this for the purpose of parking his boat and trailer on the property. The property was in very bad condition when he purchased it, he has cleaned brush and debris, and cleaned the weeds growing along the fence by my garden. He has been a quiet and considerate neighbor, and I am in agreement with his request, sincerely Shirley Ross. So those are two, okay, those two, Robert, that we received. Any further comments?
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
Okay, I just wanna say that the only reason that that was cleaned up was because I was actually the one that had to call the blight department, those two neighbors are probably not aware of.
Okay.
So I would, like I said, I'm just concerned that it's gonna go back to what it was as soon as that's rezoned, and he's allowed to do that again.
I can let me answer?
I'm gonna, I'm going to let you answer.
Well, first of all, that driveway belongs to me, I don't share it with the neighbor, I have to let him have access to his property. And that property that I got.
Just a moment, he didn't interrupt, we're not gonna interrupt each other, please.
Made me lose my train of thought, anyway, I cleaned that property up, and it stayed that way. So what are we saying, oh, it's gonna turn around because of the change of the zone? Why would that change it if I was that kind of person? I cleaned that mess up, a lot of it wasn't mine, it was left from before. And the cars are mine, yes, but you know, as people look at these cars, oh, it's a bunch of junk, that's because they're ignorant, they don't know what they are. There's thousands and thousands of dollars sitting under those tarps, but they don't know any better. And I've moved all that stuff, and I've kept it clean, and I'm telling you, I'm gonna keep it clean. And I don't particularly like being talked about like that, I mean, they're talking, you know, that's, that's insulting.
Okay.
I didn't insult anybody, and, you know, I just think, I just, you know, this, what is this, a doomsday thing? I mean, I took care of it, it's clean, it's clean now, it's gonna stay clean. All I wanna do is park my trailers and trucks, if I have a pickup truck, not trucks, trucks, but a pickup truck and trailer, so I can move my cars around to the various races and things that I do. I'm not some kind of bum, my extensive collection is very valuable, it's not junk. And, you know, if that's what they think, that's what they think. And as a matter of fact, there's a lot of, that whole stretch is all commercial property. Those houses that are back on the river, yeah, there's houses back there, but if you start from my house and go that way, it's commercial everywhere. You start across the street and go, it's commercial. There's a lot of commercial property there, they're not, they bought the house in that area with commercial. I mean, I, I cleaned it up, and it's gonna stay clean, and I can tell you that, and if you wanna rescind your order, if I don't keep my word, then you're welcome to do that. But I already know it's gonna stay that way.
Well, thank you for your comment, I appreciate it. Any further public comments? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing at seven forty-eight. Commissioners?
I have just a comment, I guess, or a question. By, by switching zoning from C two to C three, I mean, that's, he has no, that doesn't mean he's gonna be able to bring trailers back or park anything in there, right, Steve, I mean, it's. Now he has to bring a site plan in, and then the site plan has to come in front of us to look at and approve, which, you know, we would be able to have stipulations, fencing, green, I mean, there's. It actually gives more control, I think, by, by rezoning to C three, gives more control to keeping it clean, keeping it tidy, shielded from the public or, or the residents, so, uh, my personal opinion is, I don't think rezoning from C two to C three is a bad thing for anybody that's concerned about the, the look of it. I mean, I guess that's, that's my thought.
Appreciate it. Other members? Tom?
Oh. Well, at that point, we would have an opportunity for some sort of landscaping, or fencing, or.
Correct.
Privacy.
Because he can't do anything until they come back with us with their site plan. Like the one we did last month.
Right.
Anybody else?
Question for the applicant, do you plan to come up with a site plan and come back?
Well, of course I would.
Yeah, he has to.
That is the point, you don't have to, because you don't, doesn't mean you have to.
I mean, I'm gonna go blanks now, I don't have to do anything, but it's inconvenient for me to have my trailer stored somewhere, that's what I bought this place for.
So your plan is to come back.
And it's a parking lot, it's not like a backyard, it's a parking lot. It's a regular parking lot back there, paved parking lot.
So you plan to come back, how long have you owned the property?
Since eighteen. And I've been storing everything back there, this all just happened, I mean, it's been that way for, since I bought it, I've always had my stuff, my trailer.
Have it at your office? No.
That's, that's the way it's been, this happened, this all came about because of the infraction, and they mentioned Shannon's name. When Shannon came to me, we walked the property, he pointed everything out, and she's, they're saying that I didn't clean it up. He was so amazed at how fast I cleaned it, he didn't even serve me with the papers, he came and told me about the issue. And he said, I'll be back Tuesday, that was on a Thursday or Friday. He said, I'll be back Tuesday to serve you the papers. When he came back, I had done so much, that he didn't even serve me with the papers, you don't have me serve with them, he didn't give them to me. He said, I can't believe, I wish everyone was like you, I can't believe how much you've done. That's what Shannon said. And it stayed that way. I mean, there's no, there's nothing back there, it's clean. And it wasn't, I walked with him and I concurred with him, it wasn't shabby. I just wished the neighbors would have came over and said something, we could have, I would still have cleaned it up. I mean, it's just something that, you know, I was in the midst of doing a lot of other things, and it, it was shabby, and I did clean it up, and it has stayed clean.
All right, any other questions, comments from board members?
Just really quick, I just wanna say, I, I wanted to go through the proper channels, I don't think, you know, approaching somebody and telling them that they should clean up their property because it looks horrible.
That was your choice, we can go back, that's fine.
So I don't want him to think like, oh, I didn't walk over, I just wanted to.
Well, that's what I would have done.
I wouldn't know, I wouldn't know if that was something.
We're not supposed to talk.
We're done, we're done.
Yeah, we're not.
You can talk afterwards if you'd like, as neighbors, which would, I would encourage all neighbors to talk, maybe avoid coming here, which would be great. Friendly neighbors and all, so, I would encourage that for everybody, not just this particular one. So, any motion from board members? We're rezoning from C two to C three.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Um, I make a motion to rezone five two eight seven Point Tremble Road, uh, from C two small business to C three general business.
Is it five two nine seven, or five two eight?
Five two eight seven, it says here.
I got five two.
Five two nine seven.
Five two nine seven, then.
Excuse me, I'd go with the parcel ID if you would.
Okay, all right, all right, got it.
If you don't mind.
Let me see if it matches.
It's a recommendation to the township.
It is a recommendation, yes. So you're suggesting we go with a parcel ID, and it's a recommendation?
Is it the same as this I got here?
I hope so.
Yeah.
How do we get so much?
Seven four dash one four dash four three three dash zero 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 four dash zero zero zero.
Which is a recommendation.
Which is a recommendation to, uh, rezone from C two small business to C three general business.
Okay. Do we have any support for this motion?
Support.
So we have Tom's motion, Chris Daggy's support. Sue, you following that? Any further discussion from board members? Hearing none, Robert, you ready to do a roll call?
Deborah Addy is absent, Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Christopher Daggy?
Yes.
Chris Hultuna?
Yes.
Christine Holcomb?
Yes.
Tom Cozel?
Yes.
Robert Musling, yes, Robert Jacobs is absent, and Kathy Schweickert?
Yes. With the order to stand, if you do anything further, you know the rules, you have to file for site plan, right?
Yep.
All set? Okay, motion passed. Moving on to item number, well, we're done with six.
Sir.
New business.
I'll, um, I'll talk to you later after this, all right?
Oh, okay.
Okay. We're done with item number six, we're gonna move on to item number seven, which is unfinished business, which we have none. We're done with item number six. We're gonna move on to item number seven, which is unfinished business, which we have none at this particular point. Number eight, planning consultant report.
I have nothing to report.
Thank you, Steve. Item number nine is ZBA representatives' report. Deborah Addy is not here, but Gary, were you at the ZBA meeting? You wanna help us out here on this one?
Sure.
Thank you.
There were four cases that came before ZBA last month. All of them were approved. There was an approval on Sword Out Street for a nine-foot side yard variance on a pole barn over two acres, so the requirement was for twenty feet. And it just didn't work out on their property because they were narrow up front, and they, they had acreage, but it got bigger in the back. So they allowed for a nine-foot variance, which still kept them eleven feet from the side property line. So that was Sword Out. Another one was on Venice Highway over on the island, and there was a proposal for a covered porch in the back that was within the rear yard setback. And it's an open, it has to remain open, but they did approve for a roof over the patio. Next one was High Road, and six one two three High Road. They were there for type two home occupation variance, which requires in a type two that it's a little bit more, more dense than a type one, where they allow home occupation to be in basements, to be in breezeways, to be in attached garages. What he was proposing was for it to be in a detached garage. And, and that one will be coming back to you now after this. They did get their approval to do a type two in a detached accessory structure. Then the last one was seventy-nine eighty-two Anchor Bay Drive, and it was a garage. They wanted a height variance and a second floor variance, and that was granted.
Thank you, Gary. Really appreciate that.
Okay.
Item number ten is board representatives' report. Mark?
Uh, let's see, we had, this past Monday, we had the board meeting. The soil remover, removal permit for silent acres has been approved. And let's see, we've got a few things that Patrol and all that other. And we have some road maintenance going around in the area, so that's all.
Thank you, Mark. Item number eleven is chairperson's report. I really don't have anything to report, other than we seem to be a little busy right now. And somehow we get the wrong numbers on things. We're gonna have to figure out what we're doing.
It's been a bad day.
It's been not a good day with numbers. Number twelve, oh, wait a minute, before I continue on, thank you, Christine, for bringing this to my attention. We are receipt of a May fourth, twenty twenty-three letter to planning commission members regarding On the Rocks. I'm shortening this up a little bit. Regarding the public hearing that was held on April twenty-sixth. I suppose I should read this into the record. Sure. Want to? I'll read ahead.
Letter dated May fourth, twenty twenty-three to the planning commission members regarding On the Rocks Smokehouse Antique Bar, seven four nine seven Deck Road, Clay Township, four eight zero zero one, dated June twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two. Public meeting held April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. I want to thank the board members for allowing us residents located near On the Rocks Bar to voice our opinions. My concerns are that the owner of the bar and the township had already had an agreement on what they wanted to do about the change of the outside teepee bar and music hours. The board did turn down the one hundred and eighty-day trial period and then agreed to a new timeframe from May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three to September four, twenty twenty-three, but did not address how many days a week that music was allowed. The bar owner and all his workers and friends left the meeting and did not stay to hear what the residents' comments and concerns were. Most of those who left do not live near the bar. The residents which stayed and voiced our opinion and concerns were only heard by you board members. I also heard during the meeting that Artie Bryson, I believe that should be Bryson, was in on this one hundred and eighty-day trial run. My concerns are, one, the bar owner did not care to stay in the meeting to hear the concerns of the nearby residents. Two, the residents do have jobs to go to and are unable to get their proper sleep. Three, the residents can't have a patio party at their house without the loud music coming from the bar. Four, why is the music allowed on the June eighteenth two sixteen, which I'm assuming is twenty sixteen, meeting stipulation? Said no outside music allowed. Five, why weren't the residents made aware of this special meeting when the outcome affects the entire area around the bar? Six, no professional study was done in regards to the noise volume of the music. Seven, the special events permission allows the bar owner to do what he wants, when he wants. The music at the St. Patty's Day special event went to ten o'clock PM. Eight, the parking for the bar was not addressed at all. Why? The cars, they had cars parked all through the Marina area and on M twenty-nine, which is no parking. It was very difficult to drive down M twenty-nine in the dark when cars were parked all over M twenty-nine and people walking on M twenty-nine in the dark. Nine, the capacity of the people was not addressed. Why? Ten, the overbars in the area do not have music twelve months a year. Some of the bars are closed down after September. Some of the bars have inside music, not outside. When we purchased our property on Lake Drive in nineteen sixty-six, there was no loud music. The On the Rocks Bar was the Piers Diner, which was an upscale business with a respectful owner. I did not buy my house near a drag strip or a tent music bar. The owner of On the Rocks Bar should be more reasonable with his neighbors rather than run us neighbors into the ground on Facebook with false information. There are four, more than four people against the music in this area of the bar. It's the bar owner that changed the building usage. It's the bar owner that changed our lives. We did not ruin his business. And signed by Lawrence and Patricia Pronak, seven eight eight nine Lake Drive, Clay Township, Michigan, four eight zero zero.
And in regards to what we did for On the Rocks, I spoke with Cindy Valentine to make sure we, we, meaning the Police Department for Clay Township, will be receipt of what we actually approved on our motion so that they have the correct information of what is allowed to happen there. So we took an additional step to make that happen. That's it. So I'll go to number twelve, planning commission member comments.
Wish everyone a happy and safe Memorial Weekend. Welcome summer.
Oh, jeez.
We hope.
If I count the ones from work, it's like my fifth.
All right, item number thirteen, public comments. Anybody in the public wishing to make a comment, please come to the podium, state their name. One more time. I see no one approaching, so I presume there was no public comments that are going to be given. At this point, I'll go on to item number fourteen, which is an adjournment.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
There's a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? No. Motion is
Carried.
Needing is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for attending.